I've been a Superior Court Judge since 2007. At this point, I am the Chief Judge. Judge Flanders was our Chief Judge and he is retired, so I moved up into that position. We have Judge John Hilton and Judge Judd Green who are also on the bench with me. The three of us cover those four counties. Before, I was a Superior Court Judge. I was a State Court Judge down in Trutland County for about eight years. And I was also in private practice here in Dublin from 1978 to 2007 as a State Court Judge. It was just a part-time position. But it's been my honor to serve the citizens of Lawrence County and the Dublin Judicial Circuit as Superior Court Judge since 2007. It's been an experience, folks. It is something that...it's kind of a very isolating job. You don't get to mix and mingle with the people. It's one of these situations where you have to keep yourself uninvolved. You can't take sides as a judge. You have to listen and give each side an equal opportunity to be heard and to weigh the evidence. Most of the times, we do have cases that, you know, in trials, they will involve juries. And we want to make certain that the jury hears the evidence fairly presented and according to the rules of evidence. And we want to give that jury every opportunity to weigh the evidence and to decide the fate of those persons who appear before us. You look at the jury pools, the jury pools are composed of citizens from Lawrence County, any trial that we had. If you look at those folks, if you've ever had jury service, you'll look across that room, you'll see it says represents a very broad cross-section of the community. As such, it represents the conscience of our community. They listen to the evidence. They listen to what the lawyers argue. And they make the determination of guilt or innocence. My function in jury trials is, as I said, is nothing more than the referee. I make sure that everybody plays by the rules as I understand them. And then at the end of the show, if the jury should decide that there is not sufficient evidence to believe that they were guilty of the crime, that person walks out of the courtroom. If they don't, then it's that burden's on me to decide on the appropriate sentence. And we try to make sure that we get a good background on these people who appear before us who have been convicted of crimes. I have a...it's really the burden on me to decide, you know, is there something good about this person that can be rehabilitated? Can we put this person back in the community and not put the public at risk? That is one of the focuses that we have to look at. We have to look at, you know, in sentencing, is there some message you can send to other people who might want to commit a similar crime? And hopefully deter others from doing that crime. You want to look and see is there some retribution or some way that you can have these people repay the victim for whatever they may have suffered in the line of restitution? All of these things have to be taken into account when you're sentencing people. You listen to what family has to say. You want to see if they have a family support group. You want to know what they've got out in that community to help them stay on the straight and narrow. And sadly, y'all, that's something that I have found lacking. It's terrible to see this. But...and it's not just in the black community. It's community-wide, y'all. I don't know. I'm deeply concerned about...it looks to me like there is almost a demise of the institution of marriage and family, the family union. That's the sad thing that I'm seeing. I've been practicing since 1978. When I was in private practice, I did work for the Trutland County Department Family and Children's Services and the Johnson County Department Family and Children's Services, dealing with deprived children. And, you know, truly, it was not that often that you got into that. Usually, there was a family support group that could take a look after these kids. It's lacking nowadays, y'all. And I don't know what the answer to that is. And that's one of the reasons I wanted to come out here tonight is to listen to folks and see if, you know, people have suggestions. I know one suggestion, I was just talking here, and, you know, the churches, I think, can provide a tremendous amount of help in this situation. But just getting these young people involved and getting them in the door. Somebody's got to help instill a moral compass in these young people as they come out. And that's the biggest issue I have.
As he said, I think I know most everybody here and your friends of mine, Craig Fraser, District Attorney. I've been there since 2004. The...I've done my darndest to try to do the best job. And I've made mistakes, but they're going to be from my head, from my head, not from my heart. My office, and I want to say this before I get into it, is always open to everybody. All you do...and we do four counties. We do Johnson, Lawrence, Trutland, and Twigs. And a lot of times, we're not in the Dublin office and we'll be out. But I'll say this, if you need me and you need to talk to me, because when I wanted this job, I aggravated the devil out of everybody I knew. I'd knock on that door late at night. My wife tell me, she said, "Quit that now. They trying to watch TV. Somebody, some...they want to go to bed." And so now that I've got the job, I guess you can turn it around back on me. If you need some help, any of your family, anybody you know, please come and call me. Come to my office, make sure I'm in there, but then come on up and talk to me. Pick up the telephone, call me at the house. That's what I'm there for. And that is try to solve problems. Now, officially, my job is after an investigation by a law enforcement agency is done, the evidence is turned over to my office with a warrant that has been taken. And then my office begins to go through and look at it and see if there's enough evidence to proceed. And at that point in time, we'll draw up either an accusation for misdemeanors or we'll go to the grand jury for warrants. And sometimes, we don't proceed forward because there's not enough evidence. Sometimes, you see us go to trials because the evidence is such a close call that could be innocent, might not be. But listen, my job is not to prosecute, but to do justice. When I see something is being done wrong, I'm under a legal obligation to say, "Whoa, stop. We're not going any further." It stops right there in my office. We're not going to do anything that we're aware of that is not beneficial for this entire community and four counties. We're open here tonight for some questions. Lord, listen, I went to law school. I've been doing this for many years. And I have questions about the legal system. So you're going to leave tonight and not know everything. Hopefully, you'll understand a little better the way it works. But when we leave here, you're going to have a million questions. Don't hesitate. And everybody say, "Well, he's not going to talk to you." Pick up that phone and call me. Pick up that phone and call me, because I tell you, when I get in an election, I'm not going to hesitate to knock on your door and say, "Help me." That's just the way that works. So you don't hesitate to call me. And I will reiterate a little bit what Judge Gillis said. As I said, I've been doing this for a long, long time. Long, long time. I'm firmly convinced that the way out of our problems is through Jesus Christ and that church. We got to get people in church. We got to get people reading the real law book, and it's called the Bible. That's what they need to be looking at. Now, I know they're going to say, "Well, you shouldn't say that. You're the District Attorney. You ain't supposed to be..." No, I'm going to do the right thing. And I'm going to tell you that when you in doubt and you don't know what to do, you pick up that King James Bible and you look in it and read it one time, and it will 99.99% of the time, you will be able to understand it and you will do the right thing. That's just the way it works. We've got the Ten Commandments that was given to us way back. And I think I read that they have passed, in the United States, they have passed something like 52 million laws in all the states. Misdemeanors and felonies and city and county ordinances. And you know what they're trying to do? Make you abide by the Ten Commandments. That's all they're doing. So if you follow the Ten Commandments, you're going to be pretty well in the right ballpark. I say that, and listen, my voice is a little low, and I'm going to quit talking right now. I want to say Brandon Faircloth, he's my Chief Assistant District Attorney, he'll be able to answer questions, but my voice starts getting low. But let me say this. I told this tonight to some of my friends, I think I told Reverend Sheffield, maybe a few others, I'm not sure, Reverend Otham, I might have... A preacher and a logger that can't talk, he ain't worth nothing. So I don't want to take my...I don't want my voice to go completely away tonight because I won't be worth nothing. But thank you so much for having us here tonight.
Portions of this program are brought to you by Altera Networks.
Good evening. I'm Josh Powell. I'm the City Attorney and the Municipal Court Prosecutor here for the City of Dublin. And Municipal Court is where I step into the realm of criminal justice system, representing the city. In my role as City Attorney, I spend my time making sure the city complies with all the laws that are applicable to it, help draft contracts and ordinances, and make sure that Councilman, like Councilman Jones over here, stays in line and does what he's supposed to do. Councilman does a great job. Thank you for arranging this, Councilman Jones, and glad to be here. I guess the biggest thing that I want to make sure everybody knows about Municipal Court, Municipal Court is a limited jurisdiction court. That just means we don't hear but certain types of cases. That's going to be basically traffic cases. We also hear violations of city ordinances, which are going to be dilapidated houses cases, nuisance cases, abandoned vehicles, if you have overgrown property, you know, those kinds of citations that the inspections Department might write a citation for. Those will come before Municipal Court as well. But traffic violations are the major, the major thing, are mostly what we hear down there in Municipal Court. I'm the prosecutor, you know, and as your district attorney told you, my job is not to get a conviction in every case. My job is to make sure that justice is done and to make sure that the result in the end is also fair. The judge listens to the prosecutor in each case as to what the sentence ought to be. And, you know, Municipal Court probably, if you're going to have an experience with a criminal justice system, you're more likely to have it with Municipal Court. Everybody's probably been stopped for speeding at least one time. Whether or not you realize it or not, when you paid that fine, you were dealing with probably Municipal Court, or else if you were in the county, you were dealing with probate court. But sometimes, those type tickets, the tickets you get when you get stopped for driving a vehicle, can have a very significant impact on your day-to-day life. One of the things that a lot of people take for granted is the ability to drive a car. And, you know, after you get so many speeding tickets, the Department of Driver Services starts accumulating points on your license. And then one day, if you get too many speeding tickets, they send you a friend a little notice in the mail that says, "Your license has been suspended because you've accumulated too many points on your license." Now, how are you going to get to work? You know, that kind of thing. So we in Municipal Court, I personally have taken the position of trying to help people as much as I can. My office, just like your district attorney's office is wide open, my office is at the...if you come in the back door of City Hall to pay your water bill, my office is right there immediately to your left. I'm there most of the time. We have court in Municipal Court twice a month. It's the first and the third Wednesday of the month. And, you know, just like in any other court, when you come there for a speeding ticket, you're entitled to a jury trial. Oh, not a jury trial, you're entitled to a trial if you want one in Municipal Court. Now, you can have a jury trial if you want to, but if you want that, we're going to send it up to the big boys up there. We don't have the capability to bring in a jury for Municipal Court. And so a lot of times, tickets involving the suspension of your license, a lot of people don't realize that when you...if you get a no insurance charge, if you get caught, your insurance lapses, then if you plead guilty to that, that's going to suspend your...the DDS is going to suspend your driver's license. Also, if your insurance lapses, this is the biggest problem I see, people don't realize that if your insurance lapses, your insurance company is going to notify the tag office. The tag office is going to then suspend your registration. And both of those charges carry very hefty fines in Municipal Court. It's close to $1,000 for each one of those. And so we're talking, and then also, it ends up your driver's license gets suspended if you plead guilty to it. So we try to work with people as much as we can. Most people, I don't know many people that don't, if they're working, don't need a driver's license. And so I'm...my door, like I say, is open. I brought several cards, I want to make sure everybody leaves with one of my business cards. If you get a ticket or have a family member that gets a ticket, please feel free to come talk with me about it. If you've got a question, you know, nowadays, the cops all have cameras that they wear. Most of them have them on their body that they wear, and they also have them on their cars. If you get a red light violation and you just think, you know, "I think he was wrong about that," I can pull up the video and show it to you and let you see, and we can talk about it. So my door is always open. I'm here to help, and I don't want to hurt anybody. So thank y'all for letting me be here.
Good afternoon. My name is Jason Locke. I'm with JAG Probation, and we have several offices throughout the state. But here in Lawrence County, we contract with Dublin Municipal Court and Lawrence County Probate Court. So we're very closely with Josh, and we handle all the misdemeanor probation out of those courts. So we're a private company. We do not get any funds from taxpayers is one thing. We do have to charge a probation fee. But one thing Josh alluded to was suspended license. And that's one thing that, you know, people's license gets suspended and they get suspended. I've seen it simply by someone not paying a seatbelt ticket. And a year later, they get pulled over for their driver's license are suspended, and it becomes a snowball, and it keeps rolling on them. They don't know how to get out of that cycle. We handle a lot of shoplifting charges out of Dublin Municipal Court, and we offer a program at our office called Responsible Behavior Class. And that's a lot of times, just like I said, with suspended license as well, it's just taking responsibility for their actions. We do refer people to a lot of different programs. We'd love to hear about more, if y'all know any more, to refer people to, to get into programs for drug abuse, alcohol abuse. We'd love to know about more of them, where we can talk with the judge and see about getting them in that location. Like District Attorney Fraser said, "Hey, we need to be looking to Jesus." No doubt. So if, you know, if there's faith-based programs and things like that that are out there, we need to know about them so we can get that to the court. We simply get the sentence from the court, and we make sure that that sentence is followed. And if it's not, we let the court know, and then at that point, the court would change the sentence from probation to jail and so on. So we, like I said, we just want to make sure that the court order is followed and that people get the help they need.
Badcock Home Furniture &amp; More is your home store, where you'll find great savings on new living room sets, sofas, loveseats, recliners, and more. Badcock Home Furniture &amp; More has great savings every day on bedding and bedroom sets. Shop Badcock Home Furniture &amp; More for a great selection of dining room sets and save every day on electronics and appliances at Badcock Home Furniture &amp; More. 1927 Highway 441 South in Dublin. Call 275-3144 for more information. Or stop by and see Wendy and Tim Sumner or any of their friendly staff today. At Badcock &amp; More Home Furniture Store, where no credit is ever refused.
Okay, I'm going to start off the questions. I want to know how a person gets on probation for driving without the insurance card?
Most of the time, probation is used in that circumstance because the fine is so high. Driving without insurance is... Oh, not without the card. Not without the card is a pretty small fine. So it's possible, though, if they...most likely, the judge, if they were not able to pay it right away, then he'll give them time by putting them on probation. And then once they pay it off, the probation will terminate. So that's usually what we do. But on no insurance or suspended license charges, for sure, they're going, most likely, need to be on probation because that's a substantial amount of money they have to pay, and it gives them, it gives them time to pay that fine off.
My name is Joyce Richards. Sometimes, also my maiden name is Harold, so somebody might know me by Harold. But anyway, what I'm saying is, what I want to ask is, okay, I heard mostly everybody say that the churches can help, and the judge said the best thing is getting them into the door. My question is this, there's been, you know, nowadays, there's no prayer in the church, I mean, in the schools. They want no prayer there. They've done away with Jesus everywhere. So now, this is my question, now we're saying, okay, we need, these people need Jesus. We knew this all the while, but at the same time, now we're saying we want it back in. And the Ten Commandments are posted everywhere. I know they're all in the courthouses and everything, which there's only two commandments to go by. But my thing is, okay, you all are aboard, and I know that, you can get things done throughout the United States, the government system. So would that be, you're saying that you may be able to get prayers started back in the schools and prayer here and there? And I know that there's individual, a lot of people got different things that they serve, and they're trying to say that, you know, you're not allowed to do this because, you know, you can play music, the other music and everything everywhere else. But you're not allowed to call the name of Jesus. This is my thing. So are you saying that eventually prayer may be put back in the schools?
That is something, when I grew up, we started every day in school with a prayer. It was nothing for us to have opening of every athletic event with a prayer. Y'all, things have changed. I wish I could say this country was a better country, but it's not. These people on the federal level have come in and have proclaimed that there is no right for us to proclaim one religion is superior to another religion. And, you know, they go back and they try to say our country was founded on religious freedom, that you have the right to worship whomever you wish to worship in this country. But the fact of the matter is, is this country was founded on the Judeo-Christian beliefs that we all enjoy, I believe, and we try to exercise. But unfortunately, on a federal level, they tell us, "No, you cannot endorse one religion over another." So my answer to that is, is they can't tell me individually what to do. I have the right to worship whomever I wish to worship as an individual. And it needs to be, it needs to start at home, it needs to start with the families, instilling that value in these children from the time they hit the ground. If we can establish that religious upbringing at home, they'll understand what the Ten Commandments mean. They'll understand what's right and wrong when they get out here on the streets. And there won't be any need for the schools to do that. We've got to look back at ourselves and take responsibility for our children and what goes on. We can raise, say it all we want, with the federal government, but the fact of the matter is, is I don't know how we're going to change those situations. The United States Supreme Court has made their rulings, and we're a country that we have to abide by the laws that are given us, and that's what we do. So what do we do? We work within those laws. We exercise our own individual rights to worship as we choose. And we take those values and we teach these children those values from the ground up. That's the response I have.
I reiterate what the judge said, but I also want to say this, you know, you can't change it. It's a long, hard path to try to change the laws and what the Constitution, what the Supreme Court has said. We can't have Ten Commandments hanging, we can't in the courthouses, you can't have, you know, prayer in schools. But what you can do is you can pick up that phone and you can call your representative locally, you can call your state, your national representative, congressman, your US senator. And you can just record and say to them, "Yeah, I'd like to see prayer back in school. You know, this is my opinion." I guarantee you that enough people call, and I guarantee you that enough people register and say, "I don't like what's going on in our schools. I'd like to see some prayer." Now, I ain't going to say 100 people and do it. I ain't going to say 10,000 will do it. But listen, a spark has to come from somewhere. And as I said, we just celebrated Dr. King down at the First AB. That was where the spark started, right there. If he said, "Well, ain't nothing I can do about it. You know, we just going to have to..." We just got to do like it...no, you start the spark, and you can be that spark. At least try. Let me say this, I had a bumper sticker, and this is sort of what the judge is saying, the country has just changed. I had a bumper sticker that said, "Prayer is not a crime." I don't know if y'all ever saw that. I had it hanging up across from the courthouse. Prayer is not a crime. Who would ever argue with that? But you know, I received a letter from way up north wanting to know who is paying for this? Are you using any taxpayers' money to put this up with? You're breaking the law if you're doing that. And so I responded back and said, "Listen, this is my personal money. This is me. I paid for the bumper stickers. I paid for the sign, and I can do that. This is not anything to do with taxpayer money or state..." This is Craig Fraser that believes prayer is not a crime. But the point I'm making here, how in the heck did they find out way up north? I'm talking about way up north. How did they find out about it down here? It's the darnedest thing you've ever seen. I was shocked by it, and I wrote the letter back, and I said, "I hope I'm not poking a bear in the eye, and they will come down here and get me." I never heard no more from them. And it was just one little, one little thing that I did. But if everybody did one little thing, you don't, and with the help of God, it could be another revival in this country. And it could spread, and the preachers here tonight know that. I see them nodding their heads. They know that. And that's what we need to do.
My name is Stephanie Gill. I own and operate The Harmony House in Dublin, Georgia, along with my partner Brenda Chang. We're a 16-bed sober living facility for women who struggle with addiction. Brenda's a self-made woman that's worked really hard her whole life, and she uses all of her resources and assets to help others in my program and in this community. Whether it's affordable housing for low-income families, career development, financial planning, or just mentoring, she's mentored me personally for many, many years, and ultimately helped me open my own business, which was life-changing for me as a single parent. I believe that Brenda will be a huge asset to our community as County Commissioner of District One.
Vote for Brendan Chang!
My name's Leon Jenkins. I just wanted to ask a question about, I noticed they have a couple of programs. One of them is Teen Challenge, and another program that's, I don't know the name, but I think it's like going towards soap, like close to the interstate. It's a...okay, yeah. I was wondering, like, those programs, when they, like, when a person is going to court, are those programs, are those the programs that supposed to be, like, are they...like, nobody really knows about them? Even when I speak to people about them, they heard of them, but they don't know how to, how you get into those programs and stuff. But I'm like, why are they not, like, offered as an alternative to certain, to certain cases?
The rehab centers are a wonderful resource that we have, because, y'all, we've got a drug problem, we got an alcohol problem. It's more of a drug problem than anything. And these drugs just, it's amazing to me how they destroy families. I mean, people will, I mean, take money that... I mean, people will, I mean, take money that they could feed their children with and go buy drugs and let the kids starve so they can feed that habit. And that's awful. But we've got these places, like you said, the Christian Family Center, we've got Promise of Hope up here in Dudley for, for women, there's a Promise of Hope facility over in Cochran, there's one down in Glenville. We've got a whole list of those things in our, in my, in my office. And we use that, uh, as part of, a lot of times for conditions of bond. You know, it, just because you're charged with an offense does not mean you're guilty. You're entitled to a jury trial, if you want to push it to a jury trial, and the state has to prove your guilt beyond a reasonable doubt before you can be convicted of it. Well, you're sitting out here, you've been charged with the offense, you're waiting on a trial, but you've got a terrible drug offense. And when they come before me looking for bond, they want to, you know, you're entitled to bond in most instances. Uh, and so we look at it and there are these qualifications that you have to consider in granting bond. Well, if that person has a very bad drug problem or something like that, we have oftentimes given them what's called an OR bond. You release them on their own recognizance, but they have a condition in that bond. You have to go to the Christian Family Center, or you have to go to Promise of Hope, or you have to go to one of these rehab centers and you have to successfully complete that program as a part of a condition of bond. We've done it on the, and we've also done it on the back end of the program. If you've been convicted and you've got an awful drug problem and you cannot shake it and it does not look like that prison is the appropriate, you know, place for you to go, then we have set and made a condition of probation that you go to and complete an in-house rehabilitation facility. They do it also on outpatient basis. There, there's all of these that are available. What we need is, is for family to come to the district attorney's office or the public defender's office and say, hey, this guy or this girl has got a bad drug problem, help us get this thing dealt with. And then I've had the district attorney's office, you know, come to me with recommendations saying, Judge, you know, we want to recommend a sentence on this case of, uh, you know, so many years of probation, but a condition of that probation is that they attend and successfully complete an inpatient rehab facility and we send them to. They're all, they're all around. The problem with these things are that, you know, it costs money to run these programs. And, and how do they pay for them? Well, you know, things like Teen Challenge, you see them out here working on the streets and doing these projects. The Christian Family Center, those guys get out and work jobs and then come back and help, they're, they're, they're trying to be self-sustaining if they possibly can. Because truly y'all used to, before those type facilities came about, uh, you know, to get an inpatient rehab, you know, you were talking thousands of dollars. And, you know, nine times out of 10, if a person is suffering from an addiction or drug problem, the only money they got is the money they stole. And, and it's just a, a self-perpetuating cycle. It doesn't hap, it doesn't work. But these facilities are available and we've got access to all, a number of them. They're all over Georgia. You could go on the internet and, and search out rehabilitation facilities and you, I promise you, you will find them in your area or an area that you want to try to get them to. Because a lot of times, part of the rehab is getting them out of that community that they're in, because their, their old friends are the ones that are leading back down that path to the drug abuse or to whatever issue it is they're dealing with. So as I said, the most important thing is, is for family to recognize the issue and come to the district attorney and to the public defender and tell them, look, this is what's going on, y'all help us deal with this. And we can fashion that as a part of that sentence. And, and that's the best way I know to deal with it.
Again, my name is Brandon Faircloth and I work with Craig, it's his chief ADA. Part of what we look at when we get this as a possible recommendation is the individual and is this something that'll help them? We always want to start from the position of how can we help this person, particularly if we're dealing with somebody who has a drug problem, has an alcohol problem, and whatever other things they have going on, whether crimes they may have committed, whatever other problems they're having in their life, what role does drugs play in it? Part of that is looking at their past history. Have they been in rehab before? Is this the first time that they've ever had this as an option or have they gone through rehab before? Because one thing we have to look at with these programs is, it's a voluntary program. We can't make them give up drugs. We can't make them even stay in the program. Like the judge is saying, it can be made a condition of their bond, it can be made a condition of their sentence. And obviously, if they don't abide by those conditions and they don't stay in the program, they can have consequences for it. But by the same token, after they've already failed, it's too late. Now, all we're doing is we're left with the choice of sending them to prison, which nobody wants in the first place. The other thing that we look at is, who is this person compared to the other people that are potentially going into this slot? Because it's not endless slots. There's limited resources, limited beds at these facilities. And so we have to pick the people that have the highest chance of success. We also have to pick the people that have the most likelihood of having a problem in the first place. A trend that we see from going back a number of years, and I've been doing this work for 16 years now and I've seen it for quite a while, you will occasionally get the drug dealer who wants to come in and say, well, I have a bad drug problem. And sometimes they do and sometimes they need help and that can actually help them. But then there are times when they don't and they're trying to use that as an excuse. And do we give the bed to a drug dealer who's out peddling poison in our community? Or do we give the bed to the person he's selling drugs to, his life is being ruined, they're having to steal from their family, they're losing their job because of the drugs that are being sold to them in the first place? They have some responsibility for their actions, but in some ways they are a victim too. And so obviously, just like we help every victim, those people that have been preyed upon by drug dealers, those people that have crippling addictions, those are the people that we're going to prioritize and try to get the most help for. Because they have the most chance of coming back and living a good life in our community and living a full life for themselves. And so they are wonderful programs and we're always open to them. And certainly anytime we can get somebody in, we want to.
Dudley Funeral Home has been serving the middle Georgia area since 1922 and remains committed to the community today. You can count on Dudley Funeral Home.
Hey, my name is Bruce Payne. I got a two-pronged question. First, when I first moved down here, we had a crack epidemic. Now we got an opioid epidemic. Now, my question is, based on those, those two realities, what do you see that has changed? And what, 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 what fundamentals do y'all use from the crack epidemic that y'all using to cure the opioid epidemic that we have? The second question is, is about gangs, street gangs. What do you see that we need to do as private citizens to help improve our law enforcement responsibilities? How can, how can we help law enforcement of being a private citizen with gangs?
As far as the drug problem, and like you say, we've had a crack problem, we still do, but it is shifting more and more towards pills. A lot of what you see when you're dealing with a trend in drugs is what is the most easily available thing. You know, there's a reason why crack became popular compared to powdered cocaine, it's because it's a lot easier to get crack, it's a lot cheaper to make crack. Crack is a lot more profitable for the person making it, because you can take a small amount of powdered cocaine and convert it into a large amount of crack and make up a lot more money. It's the same reason that some areas have meth more than others, because some places is easier to make meth than others. The same thing is going on with opioids now. As y'all are all aware, we're in an over-medicated society and we've got so many people that get hooked on pain medicine, they get access to pain medicine through older relatives, through dead family members that the pharmacy didn't realize they're dead and prescriptions continue to get filled. We had a case back probably about four or five years ago that I prosecuted and when we tried the fella, him and his wife had been going around to about four different counties, they had been going around to about 10 different pharmacies and had been doing this all on the basis of just a handful of doctors in different counties. They were constantly, at any given time over the course of several months, having three to four addictive prescriptions for several different drugs and they had about five different drugs. And they were addicts, but they were also selling the drugs because of course, they don't have much money because they're drug addicts. And so they're using some of it and they're selling the rest. And what it ultimately took was a multi-county investigation that shut them down, had to go in and investigate some doctors, particularly one doctor who was not around here, but he was involved in it to some extent in terms of writing the prescriptions. And then, of course, all these different pharmacies, they're having to get records from them and match all this up. And when we tried them, I had to sit there and just show the jury, here's all the different prescriptions for Xanax that they have at the same time. We're talking hundreds of pills at the same time that these people had. That's part of the problem with the opioid crisis that we have right now. It is so easy and it's not like a crack rock where anybody who has it, it's illegal. There are a lot of legitimate purposes for it and a lot of people do need some of these drugs, but because of that, it's that much easier to slip it to somebody, to abuse prescriptions, to lie to doctors, and it becomes a crisis before you know it and that's what we're dealing with now. As far as the gang issue, which obviously, you know, we have a gang problem here, a lot of places do, but, you know, I'm from here and I've seen it, you know, get worse over time. One of the biggest things that I can say is a helpful thing for us to help law enforcement. And when I say law enforcement, I'm talking about not only us when we're prosecuting these cases, but also the police department, the sheriff's office, all levels of law enforcement, is being willing to watch, being willing to report, and being willing to ultimately come and testify. If you see something, or a family member of yours sees something, they see somebody getting beaten on the street, or they see somebody selling drugs, or they see somebody ride by in a car shooting and they know who the people are, if we don't have anybody who will come and say, this person did this, they're going to get away with it. That's, that's the end and the start of that. We have to have people that are willing to not only call 911, but have some level of follow-through. And believe me, I understand, that's a scary thing, particularly if you don't know what these people might do, if depending on who they are and who they are to you, you may know some of their family that are perfectly good people, or you may be afraid that they know where you live. It's not an easy thing and it's not something that I minimize because it's a big deal to have to come and point at somebody and say, I saw them do this. But it is a required thing that we have to have. The police have to have names, they have to be able to identify people. Same thing for us when we go to court. When we go to trial, we have to be able to tell the jury, this is the person who did this, this is the person who shot that child, this is the person who beat up that old man, this is the person that broke into that house. And first of all, we're not going to carry a case if we don't feel like there's enough evidence to show that they did it. Because obviously, we never want to convict somebody that's innocent and we don't want a jury guessing. We want them to be able to go back to that jury room and feel confident, yes, this is the person that did it. But part of that comes from not just us arguing well or us asking the right questions, but we've got to have people that can put them there and can say what they did. And so that's a big part of it and that's honestly the biggest thing is, not everybody's going to be in the position to give information and some information can be given anonymously and it can still be very helpful, but there is some of this information, if you actually witness something, that, you know, we have to have that. And that's one thing that we run into time and time again when we prosecute cases. There is a segment of our cases that we wind up dismissing or not being able to prosecute successfully because people are scared, people don't want to be bothered, or for whatever reason, they just don't want to remember it that day. And again, I understand, I would have the same concerns if it was me. But we're all here and first of all, let me say, thank y'all all for being here, because by being here, you obviously care about our community and we're here because we care about our community. And that's the same step that anybody who takes that witness stand, they have to make. And it's not an easy step, but it's a very powerful and meaningful step. And when they come forward and commit that act of bravery and testify and tell the truth, they make that courtroom what it's supposed to be, which is the instrument of justice and they make our community a lot safer just by acting that way and showing fear is not going to rule, law is going to rule, that we're not going to be bullied by gangs, we're not going to be afraid just because they come and they talk tough and they look hard. We're going to fight back against them in the ways that good Christian people do, with the law, with justice, and by telling the truth.
If you're in the market for affordable transportation, come on into Dublin Auto Sales. Getting to work, school, or round town every day requires dependable transportation and that's what you'll find at Dublin Auto Sales, offering in-house financing too, so credit is never an issue. See Wayne Kemp or any of his friendly staff, Bill Topping, Alan Fields, TJ DeRochi, or Freddie Cook. Look for Dublin Auto Sales at 1701 Telfair Street and 406 North Jefferson, and also at 511 North Jefferson where you'll find a great deal. Dublin Auto Sales, affordable transportation you can count on.
I am Julie Digger and I apologize for being late, but I had another meeting, so I missed the entrance. But I want to know, how do you feel about the Lawrence County Board of Education allowing guns in school?
When, when I went to school, it wasn't uncommon for somebody to go to school, have the deer rifle hanging in the back of the pickup truck and nobody thought twice about it. You didn't do anything wrong in Sopron because within an hour of you doing it, it didn't matter if you were black, white, brown, or yellow, your mama got a call. Somebody saw you do it and they knew who you were. But that's because we were in a small town and everybody knew everybody. Up here, it seems like these kids don't think anybody knows who they are. They think they're invisible. They think, I'm going to go in here and rob this place and nobody's going to know who I am and I'm going to get away with it. They think they can get away with it. It's nuts. So, I mean, nobody has told them, hey, you can't do this. And so, you know, the way we were brought up, it's a different day. I don't think, it's horrible to me to think that a school teacher has got to carry a weapon in school to defend the students from some lunatic coming in the door. But it's a different day, y'all. And I don't know, you know, is that the right answer? I don't know. I know it's disturbing to me to think that these things have changed. I, 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 I wish I understood why they have changed. Because I promise you, if I did, I'd do everything I possibly could to ratchet back that clock, you know? I hate to say it, but I think we grew up in the best of times, y'all. I, I really do. I, I cannot imagine what in the world's going through these young people's minds nowadays. You know, one of the problems that we have is with mental health. And, and the fact that I don't, you know, the state with all their budget cutting and everything like that, have basically disassembled the mental health facilities in this state. It's, it's almost impossible for someone to get help outside of the criminal justice system for mental health, it seems to me like. Um, you know, used to, we had Central State Hospital, it's a, it's an abandoned nothing up there. Used to, you could have all these, you know, you community mental health centers that were available and, you know, you had unlimited resources it seemed like to help people deal with. It ain't there. It ain't there. Our jails now have turned into mental health facilities. And it, and it's a sad thing and I wish that were not the case. But that, what that means is, we've got these people walking the streets with no mental health help and they're possibly going to be walking into that schoolhouse with some vision that they need to shoot up everybody and there's nobody to stop them. I don't think teachers should be carrying weapons, but I do think there ought to be, I do think there should be more security personnel inside that schoolhouse who are trained to respond to, because, I mean, it may very well be that a teacher is the appropriate person, it may very well be that teacher is trained, but y'all, we ask a lot of our teachers now, honestly. I can't imagine putting, uh, the responsibility on teachers to not only be educators, but be protectors too. But, I mean, you know, you have to do with what resources you have. And if the county doesn't have the resources to hire the security personnel, I guess, you know, the teachers, I don't know. I leave that to the wiser people.
Monica Sheffield, um, I'm going back to what the probation question, situation. And you were talking about people staying on probation until it's paid off. So why is the, the, um, situation that if you, that it's, that there's more added to that every month that you don't pay it off? How is that, I mean, somebody in that position probably doesn't have that much income or any, you know, and they're, they may be trying to pay it off, but you know, every month you're going to add, if it's not paid off by the end of April, I'm going to add 30 or 40 more dollars every month. And so you, who comes up with that?
As a judge, if a person is on probation and they're, and they're required to pay a fine, the probation officers will come to me, a fine, the probation officers will come to me, they'll bring a revocation petition, and they'll say, "Hey, this person's not complying with terms and conditions of probation, we need to revoke their probation. What are we going to do about it?" Well, if all it is, is a fine, then we're authorized to convert those fines to community service hours. Y'all, fines are not there to raise money. That might be part of the reason, but fines are there as a punishment for violating the law. And usually, you know, you're going to see that fines are incrementally increased, for instance, like on speeding. The faster you're caught speeding, the more fine it is, is to prohibit or to inhibit that type of behavior. Well, the person gets a fine, and they can't afford it. We're not here to punish people for being poor, we're here to punish people for violating the law. And so what you do, if you get in that position, is you go into that, come in and you tell that probation officer, "I can't afford it, can I do community service in lieu of it?" They file the petition, they bring it before the judge, the judge looks at the situation and says, "Sure, you got time left, get out here and work." There are streets in the city of Dublin right now that have trash that can be picked up. And, and what we do is, we give them credit at the federal minimum wage for every hour that they get out here and they do these community service projects. And the probation officers, JAG does it, they supervise it. Just about every court has got a community service situation that they can get these people involved in, and you can work those things off. Those, those fees accumulate, but there is now a state law that requires that if it's a pay-only situation, the maximum they can charge is three months of probation supervision fees, okay? And even that, under hardship circumstances, can be waived by the judge, when you come in on a revocation petition, and you can convert these things to community service hours. And because, it's like I said, the purpose of the fine is more than just raising money, it's to punish and to deter criminal behavior. And truly, y'all, speeding is criminal behavior. And so, you know, I promise you, if I'm out here and I'm speeding and I can't pay the fine, but I'm out here having to pick up trash for it, I'm going to think about it again next time my foot gets on that gas pedal. You know what? That's what that's all about.
Portions of this program are brought to you by Altera Networks. Dudley Funeral Home has been serving the middle Georgia area since 1922, and remains committed to the community today. You can count on Dudley Funeral Home.
Otha Stanley, local pastor, my wife restoration of church. I do appreciate you officials, I mean, I appreciate what y'all do, the judge, DA, y'all have helped me on several occasions. My question is, a lot of times, we dealing with the public, sometimes they might accumulate a felony on their record, and it's hard for them to get employment. What is the process to, uh, help them alleviate or get that felony off their record so we can get them back plugged into the workforce? What is the process and procedure that we need to go through?
There's a procedure for that Reverend, to get it off your record. I'm going to let Brandon speak to it a little more. That is, I don't want to say a common occurrence in our office, but I want to tell you something, I've been to DA quite a while now, and I have seen what happens, and I have, I have spoke at the State Bar of Georgia about this. I received the award for commitment to equality, for diversifying, making sure the courtrooms were diversified. Received a statewide award for it, and I know from when I was there and I spoke, and I made the comment, the worst thing I see is somebody comes in and tells me that, "Listen, I need some help, I got a felony on my record, and I can't get a job." And I say, "Well, you know, you can't get those things off that easy. When did this happen?" Man, you'll get, man, I've had people tell me, 15 years ago, 20 years ago, and they still haven't marked, "I'm a felon. I, I can't, I can't move up in my job. They found out that I'm a felon, they're going to fire me." I have advocated that, that there be a way that we can rectify this error now, and the state legislature has addressed it. Brandon, are you aware of some of the things they do, or how do we go about it? I'm going to let Brandon speak to it. There's paperwork, you can do it. Now, listen, everybody is not qualified to do it. I have some people come in, you know, they'll be just got off probation, committed some kind of felony, and just off probation, they come in and they say, "I want this off my record." Well, you don't get it, you can't get it that quick off your record. But I'm going to tell you this, as your district attorney, that if you qualify and you've been a good citizen in this community, you shouldn't be punished by taking away your way to make a livelihood, because you committed a crime some 20 something years ago. Now, and we see that, they just, there they are, they've lost a job, they try to go get another one. Now, all of a sudden, with the help of computers, you can go to California and they know that you're a felon. And I think everybody, I think Reverend, you know, it is hard, because me and you have talked, that when you get that felon on your record, and I tell young people all the time, man, that, sometimes if you just go to prison and they come out and give you a clean record, that'd be okay, because you can then start forward, but they don't do that. You come out and it stays on there forever. I'm going to let Brandon address this just a minute, what, what we do.
There is, there's several steps for it. It used to be that it was a little bit different, they've changed the law some in the last, I'd say, about four years, as far as the process to go through. Basically, from the standpoint of somebody who's wanting to do it, they're going to wind up running around to several different public offices. Our office is a good place to start, it's not the only place you can start, but we try to make sure that when somebody comes in, that we kind of point them in the right direction as to the different places that they're going to need to go, and also the fact of our involvement is twofold. One, we do have some level of approval on some cases. It's going to depend on the case as to whether or not we really have a say in it or not. There's a lot more latitude now just for people to get it expunged, but not all cases is it going to apply to. And so it's going to be a case-by-case basis. Like Craig's saying, we always want to help if we can. If somebody's made a mistake, it can ruin their lives if they can't get that off, and it affects their job, it affects so much. And so anytime that we can help, and we always err on the side of expungement if we can, but that's the first step. But what it's going to wind up looking like is a combination of visiting our office, getting a copy of their criminal history, and a lot of times, we can look, because it's going to be with our office, the file will be with our office, we can look back at what that case was and see kind of what the circumstances are and where it's going to fall under the law. But that's going to be the main thing, is come by our office, ask, you know, this is what we're asking for, we're trying to get something expunged, give us the most information that you can. Obviously, if the person who's wanting to expunge is coming to visit, that's the best thing, because they're going to know their date of birth, all the different dates for any incident that they were charged with, but those are the kinds of things that we need to know to kind of start that process of finding, what are we trying to get expunged? We can then look at the law and see which category do they fall into for expungement, and then if they do qualify, then we can kind of point them in the right directions for what they need for the different records to get that process completed. The other thing, which is not the same as expungement, but has the same and really a better practical effect, is we've got something called first offender. First offender is broadly any felony conviction that you have, or anytime that you're found guilty of a felony, that first time, if you do not have a prior felony conviction, unless it's certain really serious offenses, obviously murder, but even things like, you know, armed robbery or child molestation, typically, some of those serious violent or serious sexual offenses are not going to qualify for this, but most everything else, most crimes that people commit, you can ask for first offender the first time. And I always try to make a point, if I'm dealing with somebody and I'm not sure that their attorney has talked to them about it, I'll either suggest it to their attorney, or I'll suggest it to the judge when they get up there, you know, if you don't mind mentioning to them about public defendant, or mention to them about first offender, because that can be a really powerful thing for somebody. This is what that looks like. If I've committed a theft, I broke into a place and I stole a TV, and so I've got a burglar in the second degree, because it wasn't a house, and I stole a TV, so I've got a theft, well, this is going to be a felony for me. I don't want a felony, because I don't want to ruin my life, I want to be able to get a job, I want to be able to sign up for all the things that are going to be excluded from me, I want the right to vote, I want to be able to possess a gun, I want all these things that are going to be taken from me if I'm a convicted felon. If I don't have a prior felony conviction, I can plead guilty under first offender, and if the judge accepts it, and I can tell you Judge Gillis and our other judges, they do, because they want the same good for them that our office does, they then go on first offender probation and whatever sentence, it can be prison, it can be probation, it doesn't matter. When they complete that sentence, let's say I got sentenced to 10 years to serve two in prison, well, when I get done with that sentence, I have no conviction. I can mark honestly, I've never been convicted of a felony when I go to apply for a job. The trick of it is this, if I get five years into my sentence, and I decide I'm going to break into another place and steal another TV, and I get convicted of that, they will likely go back and not only give me that original conviction, but they can re-sentence me up to the maximum I could have gotten in the first place, regardless of where I got. I'll get credit for any time I've served, but I can wind up going to prison again, I can wind up with a felony conviction and just mess the whole thing up. That's why it's a dangerous thing for somebody if they're just going to live the life of crime, but for good people who've made a mistake, it's an ideal thing. There's actually two forms of first offender that we use. One is just the general first offender, there's also what's called drug first offender. If you have a felony marijuana or something like that, and you don't want to mess up your life with a felony, you can use that, that drug first offender, get that conviction set aside as long as you complete your sentence successfully, and then you still have the option down the line, if you needed it, hopefully you wouldn't, of potentially using the normal first offender. Again, a first chance and even a second chance at times to keep somebody from having their lives ruined by making mistakes, while still making them have consequences, facing and accepting what they've done, but just not setting them on a path where they can never have a job, they can never have a life like they would like to have because of a few bad choices that they've made. And so it's definitely a wonderful tool, but on the back end, for people who have older cases, or they just simply, they don't have the opportunity, or they made the wrong choice at the time when they were young and didn't take first offender, expungement is an option, and we're always happy to help with it.
Badcock Home Furniture &amp; More is your home store, where you'll find great savings on new living room sets, sofas, love seats, recliners, and more. Badcock Home Furniture &amp; More has great savings every day on bedding and bedroom sets. Shop Badcock Home Furniture &amp; More for a great selection of dining room sets, and save every day on electronics and appliances at Badcock Home Furniture &amp; More. 1927 Highway 441 South in Dublin. Call 275-3144 for more information. Or stop I and C Wendy and Tim Sumner or any of their friendly staff today at Badcock &amp; More Home Furniture Store, where no credit is ever refused.
I had the opportunity last year to attend the National League of Cities Convention, and I attended a class where they spoke about opioid epidemic compared to the cocaine problem. When it was cocaine, crack cocaine, it was a problem, but when it's opioid, it's an epidemic, and the preferable treatment for cocaine was jail or prison, but when it's opioid, prescription drugs, it's treatment. And with the assessment, they realized that, well, it was unfair punishment with the crack cocaine, and they apologized, and we got a book about it, they apologized for it, said they can't erase it, but what they can do is go back and look at some of these sentences. And if a family have a person that's incorporated, incarcerated, pardon me, and they, from crack cocaine, would you, the criminal justice system, be willing to review the case to see whether they might could be released for time served?
Back then, when I was in private practice, we, I was a member of the bar of the Southern District of Georgia, which is federal court. And in federal court, they have what's called sentencing guidelines, and the judge, you know, if you had a client who was charged with a particular offense, you had to go to these sentencing guidelines, you know, if he were convicted, or if he were intending to plead guilty, and you had to go down, and he had to look at the criminal history, he had to look at the, the crime that was involved, and you had to look at the quantity of the drug involved, and you had to look at the level of involvement in, in the crime. Well, with crack cocaine as opposed to powder cocaine, there was an enhancement in the federal sentencing guidelines. You got more of a sentence if you were caught selling crack cocaine than if you were caught selling powder cocaine. I never understood that logic, but that's how our federal government treated the situation. I think they thought they were going to handle the, the problem by imposing a greater penalty on people who used crack cocaine as opposed to powder cocaine. Now, my understanding is that those federal sentencing guidelines have now changed, and they have tried to reduce the impact of that situation. Now, in superior court, in state court, let's back away from that, because you're talking about two different court systems here. You're dealing with federal court versus your superior court and the courts in the state of Georgia. We don't have sentencing guidelines. And so the fact that the man or woman was convicted of dealing crack cocaine versus regular cocaine really didn't come into play in our court system. Now, you tell me, is there a difference between somebody being addicted to crack cocaine as opposed to somebody who's addicted to powder cocaine? I don't think there is, I think there, you know, there, I could be badly fooled. I've been told, you know, crack cocaine is highly addictive. Well, I think so, I think so. Yeah, you know, me and you both, we in the same boat here, you know, you know? So, do we review sentences? No, we don't in this, in the, in the state. We go through appellate processes, and if there's error in the, in the sentence, then in that case, you know, then the sentence could be brought back and the case retried, and we review the situation. Typically, what the issue you're talking about is addressed is through the Board of Pardons and Paroles. You have a man who is in prison, his only offense is cocaine or crack cocaine possession or dealing. Those sentences are reviewed, y'all, I can sentence a man to serve 20 years in prison, and he gets up there to Jackson, and that, those folks in the Board of Corrections review his criminal history, and they put him on a grid system, much like they do with the federal system, but at the court level. And they look at that grid system, and they decide how long, how much of that sentence he's going to need to serve, and how much he can do on parole, because they have limited bed space, they can't lock up everybody. They've got to make sure that they're locking up the people who are a danger to society, who put you and I at risk of being harmed from them. They want to put that person behind bars, most of all. But if that man has only got a cocaine addiction, then they look at it, and there's where the sentence adjustment comes in, is through the Board of Pardons and Paroles. That's through a whole different system than through our court system. Once they leave, once they leave Lawrence County and they get to Jackson, I have no more control over that situation, and the district attorney, the only way we could, any of us would have any control over that situation would be to foresee some reason to reopen that case.
One thing I'll say too is, we see a change and a trend in the way that drug offenses are being handled by the legislature in the last few years. To give you an example, in about, I think, 2013, they radically changed the sentencing guidelines for, not sentencing guidelines, but sentencing parameters for, say, possession of cocaine. If I had cocaine and I was convicted back in, say, 2010, I could get up to 15 years in prison first time. If I had cocaine on me today, which I don't, but if I did, then, if I had cocaine on me today and I got convicted of it, then at least if it was a small amount, it'd be three years would be the maximum. The idea of that in part is, the punishment for being a drug dealer is the same. For a first-time offense of possession with intent to distribute cocaine, or sale of cocaine, or manufacturing of methamphetamine, any of that, 30 years in prison is the maximum you can get. That's what it was 20 years ago, that's what it is now. But on the possession side, dealing with the addict, they are trying to go lighter on that, because they recognize that they have to have some level of punishment, but it shouldn't be the same level as a drug dealer, it shouldn't be the same level as somebody who's breaking into houses repeatedly, that kind of thing. You have to kind of make it fit the crime, and you don't want them to be overly burdened just because they have an addiction. just because they have an addiction that hopefully they get help for. Now, obviously, if they continue this, over and over they get convictions, that's gonna continue to escalate. But at a starting point, it is definitely lighter than it was. The other thing to bear in mind, and this touches on what the judge was saying, you know, outside of the parameters of when it's in Superior Court, we lose authority over a lot of it, and it does fall to the Board of Pardons and Paroles. And the unfortunate thing for people that have older cases is their case, whenever they were convicted and sentenced, it's almost like somebody took a snapshot of them. Their case is gonna be governed by the law as it was at that time on most things. There are some exceptions to that, but generally, their sentence is gonna be governed by whatever the punishment was at that time. For some people, that can work in their favor. 20 years ago, you could get paroled out on a life sentence after 14 on a violent offense. Now, you have to serve a minimum of 30 on a life sentence. That would work in your favor if you had gotten convicted 20 years ago. But if you got convicted of crack cocaine 20 years ago, you'd have a higher maximum sentence you could get, and most likely, you got a higher sentence back then. And so, you may still be in prison on something, the people that got convicted five or 10 years after you are already out. And is that fair? No. In most cases, that's not. Obviously, it's always a case-by-case thing, but obviously, there are some people that are falling through the cracks, they're in there longer than they should be, just because they've been left behind as the law has progressed. But that's why things like what you went to are important, to raise awareness, get the parole boards to understand this, make sure that the legislature remains cognizant of it, so the laws continue to adapt and evolve as they need to, and then they're applied properly by these administrative bodies like the Board of Pardons and Paroles, so we can get people out when they should be out.
My name is Stephanie Gill. I own and operate The Harmony House in Dublin, Georgia, along with my partner Brenda Chang. We're a 16-bed sober living facility for women who struggle with addiction. Brenda's a self-made woman that's worked really hard her whole life, and she uses all of her resources and assets to help others in my program and in this community, whether it's affordable housing for low-income families, career development, financial planning, or just mentoring. She's mentored me personally for many, many years, and ultimately helped me open my own business, which was life-changing for me as a single parent. I believe that Brenda will be a huge asset to our community as county commissioner of District One.
Vote for Brenda Chang!
If you're in the market for affordable transportation, come on into Dublin Auto Sales. Getting to work, school, or around town every day requires dependable transportation, and that's what you'll find at Dublin Auto Sales, offering in-house financing too, so credit is never an issue. See Wayne Kemp or any of his friendly staff, Bill Topping, Alan Fields, TJ DeRochi, or Freddie Cook. Look for Dublin Auto Sales at 1701 Telfair Street and 406 North Jefferson, and also at 511 North Jefferson, where you'll find a great deal. Dublin Auto Sales, affordable transportation you can count on.
I have a question about, when you, before a person get, receives, like, a person takes a plea for any type of crime, and the judge always asks him, was he promised anything? Was he coerced into saying this, or threatened by anyone? And the individual's normally gonna say, no, he wasn't promised anything. But if you take an individual, a person who's locked up, and he was denied bond or couldn't make bond for, the bond was too high for his family to bond him out, anything. Okay, so, this person, then, he sits at the county jail, and he comes, and he can't make bond, so he comes up for arraignment, maybe after being at the county for like five months, he come up for arraignment, and he meets his public defender that day, and he's assigned a public defender. And then, he pleads not guilty. It's after five, it's after about four or five months. Then he comes back to court, once he's been on the calendar call, but the public defender comes to see him again and says, well, they're offering you 15 to serve three. He said, "No, I didn't do it." He said, "Okay, then, well, I'll let them know." So then, after about nine months, the public defender comes back down to him again and says, "Well, I got him to come down to a 10 do two." He said, "Well, I can't, I ain't do it. Where can I go to court?" He said, "Well, I don't know. I'll try to get to the next court. They will try to get the calendar or speed up your trial or something." So after about a year, with this man sitting down, apparently, he's done, he don't have a job no more, and he probably, if he had anything he was paying for, it's probably gone, he probably lost all that. So after about a year, they come down to him and they say, "Well, it's still 10 do two, you already got a year under your belt." So he takes the plea, because he knows that he can't, in his head, he's been out here a year, and there's no way out for him, because he don't have no family who has money to get him a paid attorney. He doesn't, I mean, he's been sitting out here in the county jail for a year, and the only thing he looks at is, or even if they came to him and said, "We're gonna give you a 10 do one, credit for time served, you get out, you get out today, you have 10 years on paper." That's one of the favorite ones right there. You get credit for time served, you go home today, but you got 10 years on paper. Only thing in that man's mind is, I get to go home today. I've been sitting out here a whole year. No, I didn't do it, but I get to go home today. So he takes a plea, because the only thing he thinks about is going home today. So it's like, that sounds like coercion to me, or that's something like a basic, I'm gonna sit you down here, that's a waiting tactic. Well, he's waiting, being locked up versus everybody who else is waiting to prosecute him, they going home, and it's like, to me, it's like a forced plea upon a person. Because, you know, you can, he can say, "I can go to trial," and who knows, say, he may do another three or four months, but every man has his breaking point, so, and you never know what it is. But when you tell a person he can go home today, that's the only thing he's thinking about. He's not thinking about the 10 or 15 years that he got on probation, state probation, that if he does anything, they could snatch his probation. So it's like, in a situation like that, because I know if you're able to get out, you're able to find the resources, because nobody's gonna fight for your freedom harder than you will. So you get out, he can go to work, he can become a productive citizen, he can, maybe can get an attorney, he maybe can even get up to people who probably involved in his case to have them to come to court. He can do a lot for himself, but if he's locked up and he can't make bond, sometimes, it's like, when he goes in and takes that plea, he's taking it because of, sometimes for the sole fact that he's able to get out. So, in that case, is that, it's like, I'm not, I'm not understanding that system when it comes down to the bond, who gets bond or who doesn't get bond, who can't, or maybe he got a bond, but he can't afford it?
I understand what your situation is. You've got a man who's sitting over there in jail, he has no family resources that will come forward and stand up for him and post his bond, and he's sitting there, and he sits there, and he sits there.
And he sits.
Ma'am?
And he sits.
There's, that is always that situation, all right? Now, we have, our system is not the most perfect. I'm the first one to admit to you, it's not a perfect system, but it's the best one I know of. We do have a public defender, and it is their job to go to that jail and meet with these people, and find out what those circumstances are. We review those bond situations from time to time to see if there's somebody sitting there exactly in those circumstances you're talking about, and find out why. I get motions all the time to reduce bond. I cannot unilaterally just go out here and say, "Bring him out of the jail and I'm gonna reduce his bond." I have to have a motion brought by the public defender or his lawyer to review the bond situation. The state has the right to have their input in the situation. It may very well be the state feels very strongly about their case against that person. It may very well be there is a person who is a victim who feels very strongly that that person does not need to be out on the streets for fear of some sort of threat. All of these things have to be taken into consideration by the court when assessing bond. The purpose of bond is to make sure that that person is gonna come back to court when it's time for the case to be tried. It's also to make sure that they're going to behave, and they're going to abide by the conditions of bond that the court seems appropriate under the circumstances. Okay? So, you have the man, he's sitting out here in jail, he's been sitting there, sitting there, sitting there. We are in hopes that the public defender will sort through those people and will bring those motions or bring them to our attention, because I promise you, that's one of the issues that I'm very sensitive to, is the right to a person to have a fair bond hearing. You're presumed innocent until such time as the state proves your guilt beyond a reasonable doubt, in a fair trial. We try to get to these cases as quickly as we possibly can. We put cases on our calendars regularly, where there are issues of people not being able to find witnesses, or crime lab not having their work done, or for whatever reason. It's not right to go forward with a trial without everybody in the courtroom able to give all sides of the story for whoever is going to make that determination to hear it. Now, if your man is sitting out there in that jail and he can't come forward, it's incumbent on him to tell his lawyer, "Hey, I've been here for a whole year. Bring a motion for me to have my bond reviewed." And I promise you, we set them down as soon as we get those notices. If he's sitting out there and he hadn't got a bond, and he can't get out on bond, he has a responsibility to make sure he tells his lawyer about the situation and they do something about it. Now, you say, "Hey, how can he stand up here and say, 'I'm making a plea here and I'm not under any threat or anything of that nature.'" Everybody has a right to a jury trial. Everybody has that right to the presumption of innocence. Everybody is deemed to be accountable for their own decisions. He makes those choices. I ask those questions of every person, and I'm not asking those questions just to hear myself talk. I wanna know, is that man making a free involuntary decision, and is he making a knowing and intelligent decision to waive those rights that he is waiving before he enters that plea? I cannot sit here and speak for him. He is an adult if he's in my courtroom, or he is being treated as an adult. And as such, you have got to man up and be responsible for your own decisions. And if you truly are innocent and you want to push your case, I promise you, the case will be tried. That's the best answer I can give you.
Judge is correct. We ain't got a perfect system, but we, but it's the best system anywhere in the world. And, and the judge is right. The system takes, it ain't perfect, but it takes into account that you can talk with your lawyer, and, and the judge can't, just like he said, randomly say, "Bring them to me, I'm turning them loose." We have to work through due process, and it's a matter of filing motions and getting to court. It's not a fast system. I was gonna say a while ago, our system is not a revolutionary system. We don't decide to change things or do things a certain way, and then in a matter of an hour, or a month, or a year, or five years, all of a sudden, we just boom, change it. We have a steady system. It's evolutionary. It moves slowly, but in the process of moving, we try to do justice. And, and the judge is right. I can tell you, I've seen it. I've seen them file motions and bring in. Listen, I can't tell you the names and I'm talking. When I first got to be a prosecutor, many, many years ago, there was a man fixing to take a plea, misdemeanor charge, not a felony, and, and I got some evidence that exonerated him. I mean, it was at the last minute. I mean, he was fixing to take a plea and take a $100 fine or something, and went out there and dismissed the case right there at that point in time. His lawyer said, "Hey, wait a minute, I think we got it worked out." And I said, "No, we got evidence showing that he didn't do that." I want you to go away tonight knowing this. My office is not there, this system is not there to persecute. There's a big difference between persecuting people and prosecuting people. My job is to make sure justice is done, okay? And then you got Judge Gillis out there, he's sitting on the bench. If I come in there and start telling him something that don't sound right, and he don't think justice is being done, then he has the authority to say, "Wait a minute, I don't know about this." And then he can do something about it. And if he decides he don't wanna do it and he wants to be unfair, then you have the Appeals Court, and you have the Supreme Court of Georgia. And listen, if it's an egregious enough offense that the court system has done, it can go all the way to the Supreme Court of the United States of America and make sure that justice is done. And you say, "Well, the man's been in jail the whole time." I understand that, and that's not fair, and we see that. But I'm telling you, this system is made to do the best it can to ensure justice in every situation, and I think everybody at this, at this table here, and, and people in our system do that. They try to make sure justice is done. Thank y'all.